As a preliminary matter, Woody Knight, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board, permit me to confirm that all members and persons participated on the agenda. If the President can hear me. Uh, planning board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes, sir.
Larry Murphy?
Present.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kinter? He may be joining us soon, maybe he won't. Uh, Steve Mangian?
Aye, aye.
Very good. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs, Planning Director?
Yes.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Eric Sorensen from Newbury Golf Center? Hi Eric, I saw you wave. Uh, and TJ Melvin, Free Newbury Report Turnpike. I'm sure he'll be joining us soon. All right. Good evening, this is August 7th, 2024, opening meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, until March 31st, 2025. The order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and all public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is supported, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board has convened, convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found at the town's website, and in which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 832714013056, the passcode is 108790, or participate by calling 1-929-2056099US, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video in or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable 9 on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Uh, meeting materials were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or the representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Meeting business and ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll go down the list of board members, inviting each one by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer or phone when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones, with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. Taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment in or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand button, hand function. Video conference participants to raise hand, hold over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at star 9 on your phone keypad. I will allow questions to comments for members of the public who have raised their hand in order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raise hand button. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask questions or make a comment. I'll afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raise hand column, and again, afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, participant, applicant, representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll bubble. Okay, so that's all with, uh, next up on the, first thing on the agenda tonight, um, the liaison and meeting reports. We have ZBA.
Yeah, uh, thanks Woody, um, the ZBA normally meets on the third Thursday of the month, but in August they met actually the first Thursday, which was the first, uh, in order to, uh, uh, review and approve a final draft decision regarding 5 Cinder Avenue. Their next meeting, uh, will be Thursday, October 17th, per their usual schedule. And that's all I have.
Okay. And then the, uh, next liaison meeting report is Conservation Commission, that would be me. Um, I believe Conservation had a meeting last night. I was, I planned to attend, planned to attend the meeting, but at the last minute, something came up and I couldn't attend the meeting. So I will watch the video and, uh, give you a report on that meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting. Uh, meeting minutes.
Woody, if, Woody, if I may, I happened to tune into the Conservation Commission meeting for a little bit, and the Sunset Club did come up, apparently they are going to submit a notice of intent to the CONCON at their next meeting in August. And apparently, also, their engineers have been talking to Joe Swartka about coming before the planning board. So I guess we'll be seeing something from them shortly, since their engineers are talking to Joe.
Okay, thank you Steve, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Meeting minutes, um, we have approval for the July 24th, 2024 minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
For the 24th?
Yeah, yeah.
I get a sense that we have, um, that entertain a motion for approval of the meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the July, the meeting minutes of the July 24th, 2024 meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'd be having a second.
Okay. Um, although, oh, roll call vote, um. Uh, Peter?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
We do not have Scott. Um, Steve, how do you feel? He's, you're muted, Steve.
Here we go. I don't believe I'm a voting member, so.
I was asking how you felt about it, giving you the opportunity.
Oh, I felt good about it, I read it, I had no conflict to offer.
And I, as Chair, approve the meeting minutes as well. Okay, thank you, um, old business. We have, um, Newbury Golf Center, Eric Sorensen, 131 Skollon Road, requests for approval of ASBIL plan and release of performance guarantee. Um, Eric is looking to close out his site plan review. He provided engineers a letter and revised an ASBIL plan to the planning board, and is requesting approval of ASBIL plan and release of performance guarantee. Do you want to give us a brief update on what's going on, Eric?
Yeah, I submitted, um, to Kristen a letter from my engineer just outlining the four questions that Joe had, and, um, he addressed them, and hopefully that satisfies the board. I don't think there were, I think we, there wasn't any major, um, issues, obviously, or engineering questions, so he answered them, and I think, hopefully, there's no other questions, and we can move forward, but if there is, we'll, we'll address them and tackle them.
Before I ask the board if they have any questions, uh, is there anything you'd like to say, Kristen, about?
Oh, um, I agree with Eric that there were fairly minor, um, issues that came up with the last version of the plan, and the plan was revised, and, um, uh, peer review responded that, you know, Joe Swatka was satisfied with the revision, so I think things are in good shape.
Good. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Woody, I think it's a good idea to go for it, I would just probably make it a reference that the board, uh, the bond should be released after the report to the select board, that's all.
Okay, great. Um.
Yeah, I've, I've, uh, read Joe Swatka's, uh, August 2nd, um, letter, and, um, it, it appears that all, that, that the four bullet points that he had previously mentioned have been adequately addressed, so I have, I have no issue with, uh, the, uh, approval of the record plan.
Um, all right, that being said, um, I'd entertain a motion to approve and accept the ASBIL plan for 131 Skollon Road at the Newbury Golf Center dated 11/3/23 and revised on 7/30/24.
So.
Is it the second?
Second.
Second, Mary? Yep. All right, uh, roll call vote. Um, Peter?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I don't believe Scott's here, um, I also am in agreement, yes. So the ASBILs approved, and as mentioned by Peter before, we are going to, um, let the select board weigh in due to the fact that it's a special permit, um, before release of the, um, before, uh, performance guarantee.
So, so Woody, can I just ask you a quick question? Will I have to come back in front of the planning board for the performance guarantee to be the bond to be lifted, or once I satisfy the select board?
I, I don't believe so, I think it would be administrative, but Kristen, do you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I think you could, um, I think you could just vote to release the performance guarantee following satisfactory, you know, report out to the select board, something like that. So you wouldn't have to come back, Eric.
Okay. All right.
What's your, um, just, sorry Eric, do you have a date for your update to the select board?
No, as soon as I'm done with you, then I'll, I'll go in front of them. I think kind of that was the order that Martha laid out, so we satisfied Conservation, the planning board, then the last will be, so I think the next meeting.
Yeah, so I think that should be, I mean, my thinking is a vote can reflect that you wouldn't have to come back to the board, but as soon as the select board signs off, we can proceed with release of the bond.
Would you like to know if there's a motion, uh, Woody?
Actually, can I ask a question first, just a clarification?
Sure, sure.
Uh, Kristen, then this, you're also holding separate funds though for peer review, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Now, so that we're not talking, we're not dealing with that, it's just the performance guarantee at this point. I thought that was the case, I just wanted to confirm it.
Yeah, no, that's a good comment, Larry, there is, there are some remaining funds to cover this last review that Joe did, so as soon as we, um, you know, pay those bills for Joe, uh, we can release the rest of the escrow account if there isn't any, so that would be a separate vote.
Yeah, okay. Fine, that's all I had.
Peter?
Yeah, do you want that in the form of a motion, uh, with your guys to, you know, after, you know, uh, Eric clears the hurdle with this select board, then we, then we can release those? Because I'd be happy to make that motion. Okay.
Yeah, please.
There you go, you have it.
Okay, um, so there's a motion on the floor to uh, release a performance guarantee after an appearance later on in August with the select board. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, are all those in favor? Uh, Pete?
Sure thing, yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Steve, how do you feel?
I feel good, yes.
Great, and, uh, yeah, I'm yes as well, uh, thank you, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Good luck with everything.
Okay. All right, thank you, take care.
All right, um, that's it for old business, on to new business, um, we have TJ Melvin from Millennial Engineering, Free Newbury Report Turnpike, Mono Bavaro, Family Realty, uh, 2 LLC. The applicant is, uh, requesting a modification to the approved site plan to add sidewalk and retaining wall and a transformer pad. Wood, um, so is the, is TJ here from Millennium Engineering?
Uh, good evening, can you guys all hear me okay?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Uh, TJ Melvin, uh, with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, so this project was back in front of the planning board, uh, probably three or four years ago, now I believe, uh, we were back in front, uh, maybe the last meeting to ask for an extension. Um, so this request is to again, add a sidewalk to the rear of the building. Um, to do so, we'd have to construct a small retaining wall, as we currently have the garden, which handles all of the stormwater for the site located in that area. Uh, the, the reason we're making the change is the, the architect had kind of put further detail into the first floor layout and kind of how it's going to be constructed, um, where we have part of the first floor will be commercial space, the other, the other half will be not residential, but either like storage or something for the residents of the building. Uh, and in order to do so, it's requiring egress doors to be located off the, of the building. Um, so therefore to, to get people away from the building, we're requesting to be able to add the sun. Um, as I mentioned, the, the rain garden is back there, so we did have to take a look at the volumes of the basin, just to ensure that, you know, the minor that we're filling wouldn't impact its capacity to handle the stormwater. Uh, we had provided those, um, pre-development and post-development calculations to Joe Swatka. I'm not sure if the town anything back from him yet or not. Um, the basin still functions, it's still the 100-year storm event, we still meet the pre- and post-development runoff rates. Um, so really, just unchanged to the basin itself, um, and then as part of the project, we need to install a transformer, so we're requesting to add a transformer pad off of the parking lot as well.
Uh, through Woody, TJ, could you share that to our screen just so the board can see that, because as you said, wow, yeah, and just point out the things?
Yeah, sorry, I am, uh, out of time, but I will try my best to make this work, let me know if this is showing up for you.
It is, yeah.
Okay. All right, let me see if I can zoom in here. All right, so this is kind of that walkway I'm talking about, um, this was never part of the original design. Uh, we did have the signs along the other two sides. Um, and when we were first in front of the board, we kind of just had a blank space that would be with this, the, would be commercial, the other half, again, couldn't be residential units, but some sort of something accessory to the resident, the residence, you know, if it's bike storage or something like that. Uh, so at this point, they have kind of like shaped the lobby, the utility room, really put the detail of what this first floor is going to look like, uh, again, which has kind of caused the need to add this walkway along back here. Uh, this heavy outline that you see here is the outline of the rain garden. Um, it previously was, you know, maybe put closer kind of in this area here. Um, so we put the retaining wall to kind of maximize the volume of the basin, you know, even though we are taking some of it out in this area here. Uh, again, we updated the calculations to show this still does handle the 100-year storm event. Uh, and then the transformer path located right there, if you, I'll see my mouse just off the parking lot, um, just to be able to, for the transformer, that'll be needed for the project.
Okay, and, um, there was a few other changes that you just showed, you just pointed out the pad for the generator. Uh, where's the snow storage relocation? That says right there to be relocated.
Uh, it may be a bad note, uh.
Does it show it going on the north end of the, uh, of the site now?
Uh, so we, we have it, we still have it here, I, I don't think the intent was to remove that. Um, it may just be a, a label that I'm missing, that may have just snuck in, but that, oh, I see it right through here, yeah, the intent is this would still be snow storage area, um, that is in reference to something else. That's probably just a bad note, but we do have, um, additional snow storage area shown on the site.
So, that's still going to be snow storage, it's not going to be to the north, uh, on the Newbury Port end of the site?
Correct, it would be both, so we, we would, you know, if we had to trim this back a little bit to make sure we stay clear of the transformer, uh, but there's really no other reason that we couldn't utilize the rest that has snow storage as well as to the north part of the site, up in this area.
Okay. Um, Kristen, do you, do you have any uh, comments or questions on this, before I ask people, is there any comments, questions?
Um, no, so I, TJ, we, we have not shared these, the submission to peer review yet. You know, we're waiting to have this conversation with the planning board and then see if the board wanted to authorize peer review for it. Um, so we'll need to do that, you know, we will get all the stormwater calculations that you submitted over to Joe Swatka, um, if the board feels that's appropriate, um, just, I mean, I think the width of the sidewalk is four feet, is that what it showed?
Correct.
So I mean, I, Woody, the board probably has the same questions, but I, I think my first question is relative to the fact that it looks as though it's in jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and I think generally when modifications or projects have to go through both boards, it's, uh, certainly best practice to have that at least happen simultaneously, so, um, so that's one of the first questions I would have.
And, uh, TJ, has, have you, uh, presented this to the Conservation Commission yet?
No, I've not, uh, it's kind of a strange situation where the order had expired. Um, and I'm not sure if how many of you would, there was a potential that there was a bill that was going to be passed to extend permits, we were kind of waiting to see what happened with that, because it would have revalidated that, um, but that has not gone through, so we will have to file a new notice of intent with the Conservation Commission to get, uh, back up and and, yeah, a new order of conditions issued.
Okay, because that, um, what they, what they would have to say would be important information for us. Um, uh, all right, let me ask the board if they have any questions or comments, so. Start with Pete, Pete, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, TJ, could you throw the, uh, could you throw the plan back up, please?
Yep.
Thanks so much, because my questions will be based on the plan. Okay, if you can zoom out just a, a skosh, just so we can see the whole plan. No, probably the other direction. Zoom out, yeah, there we, oops.
Good, more?
Yeah, a little bit more, just so we can see the whole plan.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I just need to have clarification as to whether the snow is going to be removed or not removed, it's going to be relocated, so that's going to need to be spelled out on the plan, right?
Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll fix that to, to get rid of that note.
Okay, perfect, and, uh, so the, the, the snow storage that's on the north, that was always on the, on the plan? Because I don't even remember that.
I believe it was, uh, I would have to double check, but I don't think we, we kind of went through a few iterations where we were having some talks with Martha about maybe changing the parking, uh, but I will double check that and definitely show whatever was on the original approved plan.
Okay, because if it did, if it was changed and was put there after, uh, we had looked at it, then you're probably going to have to talk with Newbury Port and everything, because that's actually in Newbury Port, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the, uh, sidewalk that's going to be going on, as it was kind of mentioned, that's going to affect the conservation and impervious service and all that sort of stuff, so that'll have to be taken into account, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and my last one is kind of a, a concern, because something has changed, have you been to the site recently?
Um, probably not. Couple, probably over a month.
Okay, so are you aware of what the highway department did to the rotary and its access lanes?
Yes.
Okay, so now when you're coming off that bridge, right where this parcel begins, it directs people not to stay in two lanes, but for people going, uh, into Newbury Port to be in the right lane for turning.
Mm-hmm.
So they're directed to that prior to basically getting onto where this site is, which was not, uh, was not the situation previously, because you would make your decision at the rotary? Do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Sorry, God.
Yeah, so my concern now is would there potentially be more enhanced flow in that lane now that the state has shifted the amount of, of, of flow into that lane? And if that is the case, I don't think it's, it's, my concern is not so much people entering onto your site, but it's people exiting your site, because there isn't a lot of room for negotiation from that point to the rotary, to the adjacent property.
Yes, yep. Um, yeah, I, we can try to reach out to the, to the state, kind of see if they had comments. Though, we have had to request extensions, you know, since we originally got the approval from SDOT.
Okay.
Uh, and they have it flagged as an issue, um, again, we, so we do have valid access and, uh, unique permits from the state for this, um, but we can try to see if they have any thoughts on as well, I have.
Yeah, and, and.
I guess.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and along the same thread, you know, we had originally, I think, approves for some, uh, buffering going on, some enhanced, uh, uh, landscaping along the, well, there is no sidewalk, but along the front of the property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so now, if we do have that increased volume of traffic, uh, just concerns that, you know, whatever is put up there for, uh, greenery, not interfere with line of sight.
Understood, yep, yeah, we could take a look at that.
Okay.
Uh, we do, we do show a sidewalk, sorry, just for clarification, we do show a sidewalk along the frontage of the property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, just, I just wanted to clarify that, because I know Kristen and I had talked about that over the phone as well.
Beautiful, where does the sidewalk go after it leaves your property? Or does it go into?
It's just, uh, it's just kind of along our frontage, so kind of from curb cut to curb cut, um, just really, just improving in front of our property.
Okay, so the, the, are those going to be condos or apartments?
Um, I don't know, to be honest. I don't know, to be honest. It's kind of been. The, the owner's kind of. Some difficulties with the previous contractor. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not sure where his head's at, at, as far as rental versus ownership at this point.
Yeah, okay, just now, then, then we, then we touch back on public safety as to what's going to happen with those people once they. Walk off your property onto something else.
Correct, yeah, so I mean, the, these are the things that obviously we had initially proposed and were approved. Uh, but we could certainly look at. Um. Kind of, I guess, the flow path of where people would be going and potential. Uh. There's landing spots for them once they do leave our property.
I think just if you do get a chance to connect with someone at the state. Um. Because of their recent work to kind of enhance the crosswalks and the pedestrian. Just mobility in general around the rotary, I would just be sort of interested to know if they have any thoughts about. How the people living here. Like might get to the train station, for instance, and maybe that's a conversation, you know, I could reach out to the Newbury Port Planning Department as well, because I know they've. You know, they've been involved in this. Uh, you know, Route One effort for a long time with the state.
Yeah, we.
I know it's, it's not necessarily something pertaining to your, to this particular property, but in thinking about fourteen new. Dwelling units and, you know, as Pete's saying, sort of safe passage for people outside of car safety, just all those issues related to the new. Layouts of the lanes coming off the bridge. It's just like a lot has been changing right now, and I think, you know, everybody's kind of. Adjusting to it, but just making sure there's an awareness that there. You know, people are going to be living here. It's not just retail like most of the other um. Dwelling, you know, buildings on the rotary are mostly all retail.
Yeah, I. I can certainly try to reach out to the state, I just. Uh, as far as like any other offsite improvements, I don't think it's something the owner would kind of entertain at this point, only because, again, he does already have the approval. Pending this. Change to the back, but I, I can certainly reach out to the state and see. You know, if they have any future plans coming up, also, I know most things are usually. Well planned out in advance. Um, or at least starting design on there, so we could definitely reach out and see what else they have coming.
Thank, thanks, Woody, that's all I have. Thanks TJ.
Um, Larry, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I, I think my questions have been answered, Woody.
Okay, um, Mary, do you have any questions or comments?
Do you show up the, whether it's a condo or what would? I mean. Why wasn't that determined? It was. Is, is it okay that it's not determined now?
The. Um, when it was approved, they said it was going to be live, li- living area, fourteen units, but they didn't say whether they're condos or. Um.
So we assumed it's an apartment building.
Yes.
Uh, it is a mixed use building.
Oh, mixtures, okay, there you go. Alright, that's it. Okay, I wonder what, there are a couple of things going on here. Alright. It makes sense.
Yeah. Some commercial on the front floor and then um. Space for. The people upstairs according to what TJ told us.
Yeah, kind of talked about maybe like a storage area or something, we, we can't be residential units themselves, so just something to Larry to the apartments. Or condos, whichever way they go.
Uh, Steve, do you have any questions?
I'm wondering, I, I know when you come down off the bridge and before you get the traffic circle. There's often a lot of flooding on Route One itself. And I'm wondering whether um Millennium has seen any additional flooding problems um that occur sporadically.
Uh, we, we really haven't looked at it. Again, th- this whole site was approved about four years. Uh, so I guess if there are any changes between now and then, we, we really haven't monitored. Any offsite issues. Um. You just. Kind of just made the modification for this rear walkway and slight adjustment to the pond. Uh, but other than that, we, we really haven't looked at any other aspects of this. Since, since it was originally approved.
Yes. My, some of my memories go back to when I would be a. A commuter getting in the train station and. Going through that air, area after a very heavy storm, but that's all, thank you.
I, now that I take a glance at this plan, I have a question now. On this plan, I don't see. Snow storage to the north.
Oh, sorry, I scrolled down to the, to the grading, just to show. Uh, so they're right here.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, sorry, it's a different sheet.
As, as Steve stated, uh, I think it's important to determine if that was on the original plan or not, because and. To either remove the, to be relocated, or if it's not in. That Newbury Port section. To um. If it wasn't originally there, to not have it there because. Of what Steve just stated, it does. That section of Route One has flooded before and. Heavy rainstorm, so. That's a plot to move, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, please clarify the snow storage areas.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, Kristen, do you have anything else?
Um, I just. Uh, PJ, there's a note on there, I don't know if it's new or old about. Um. Seeing the details of the retaining wall and the rain garden, is there? A detail sheet for the proposed. Retaining wall and the location of the rain garden?
Uh, so we had a. Uh, a detail originally for other walls, I believe onsite. The, the rain guard, I know we definitely had a detail, I actually had. Joe had asked if I could give him a copy of that the other day, so we did that. Uh. As far as the retaining wall, we can. We can provide a standalone detail for that if needed.
And to piggyback on that, is there a planting plan for the? Frontage? Along Route One? Is there a list of plantings or? Do you have?
Um, I can, I, I can look at the. I can look at the original approval, I. I can just resubmit whatever we had as far as the. Any landscape plan, um. But I ju, I, I can't recall. What we had along the street, but I certainly resubmit whatever we had.
Right, with the line of sight and the changes on Route One. It's important that there's. Nothing in there that's going to. Uh, and be the line of sight.
Yep, absolutely.
Um. So. Where do we need to go from here, Chris? Do. Any thoughts as to? They need to. They, they need to go before conservation, right? Put it into conservation.
Yeah. And I, I think. If the board wants to. Have a discussion about how significant the changes are in terms of a, a minor or major modification.
Oh, yes. Very, that's correct, uh. Does anyone? Have. Any thoughts on whether this is a minor or? Major modification? Pete?
I can, I can start the discussion when, yes, um, you know, based on um, uh, the code, I would believe that this would fall into the category of minor modification, at least that's my interpretation, but uh. I'd like to have Larry weigh in on too, on that too, that's his feeling as well.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I'd call it a minor modification.
Mary, how do you feel on that?
I, I definitely think it's minor.
Okay. And uh, Steve, how do you feel on that?
I agree, it seems like it definitely is a modification, but it's a minor one.
Okay. So that being said, um. Do we have to have that in a form of a vote?
I don't think it needs to be a vote, I, Larry, do you have an opinion on that question?
Uh, to be honest with you, I thought we already voted this as a minor modification. But I, my memory could.
Yeah, I, I thought so too, it seems.
Could be faulty, but I'll, you know, uh, there's no harm in emotion, so I'll move that, that the proposed um. Uh, modifications would be considered minor mo, mi- minor modifications and accepted as such. Now, that could change, I suppose, if, if Khan Khan comes up with something that. But, but from what I'm seeing here, it's uh, I, I don't see any need for it treated as a major modification.
So second on that motion?
Second.
Uh, Pete, how do you feel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
I still feel yes.
Yes, okay, and I, I say yes as well, I don't. Minor modification. Um. So I, I believe that's it. Someone jump in if I'm wrong. Um, so we'll. Wait for peer review and. Conservation needs to weigh in on the issue, correct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get everything over to Joe if he doesn't. Have it yet and uh. Um, TJ, we can touch base on just some of those detailed plans. I mean, if, if they're. The same sheets that were in the original decision, I can look through the files and, and find them, but. I think because enough of us. Weren't around when this was permitted. Twenty twenty-one, it would be helpful just to. See how it all fits together and. I can help provide that.
If you have. Any issue finding it, I just let me know, we can get a fresh approval.
Great.
Okay, thank you TJ.
Thanks TJ.
Great, thank you.
Um. Next thing on the agenda. Um. Planner. Pl- planning director.
Alright, um. Thank you, Woody, for sharing a great meeting, um. Thank you again, Larry, for all your meetings, um, that you sort of just share and um, for agreeing to continue as clerk, I think that's. Will be very helpful to continue to have your help with some of the minutes and um, other. Other tasks, so um. Appreciate both of you on your officership, um. Let's see, a couple of things. Going on, um. On Monday, we had a uh. Pre-application meeting with all the department heads for um. Damon Jefferson's Site Plan Review Project for his. Nonprofit. Arts and Education Organization, which is called uh Whipple Tree Works. Um, so he has submitted preliminary plans that I've reviewed and. One of the first steps in site plan review is to hold a, a pre-application meeting with, with staff and department heads, um particularly. Related to um, police and fire and building inspector. So we held that on Monday and um, those Damon will be. Gathering up his um, application materials to submit to the board at the next meeting. So he'll submit on the twenty-first and then um. It is a level two site plan review because of the. Increase in parking area in particular, um, that's really. Otherwise, there really aren't a lot of change to the current conditions of the site, so it should be a pretty straightforward process, but it is a level two review, which will. Require a better notices and a legal ad, um, so we'll set the date of the public hearing probably um. In September, probably at the mid. September meeting, so that'll be coming. To the board, um. Wanted to mention. Uh. TJ mentioned it a little bit in his comments, but there was, you know, a lot of activity at the State House last week and just a couple of planning related things. There was a large economic development bill that included this. Tolling provision for expired permits, similar to the provision that was approved during COVID. Um, I don't know a lot about what, how that was. Um. You know, the exact drafting of that provision, but it, it didn't pass the Economic Develop- Development Bill, the larger bill did not pass, so. Um, so anyway, that's on hold for the time being. However, the Affordable um Homes Act, the very ambitious. Housing funding and policy bill um did pass, so that's. A pretty amazing accomplishment and is, I think it's more than. It's like five point one billion. In the next five years for housing related, particularly affordable housing related initiatives, um, again, both. Funding things like first time home buyer programs and um. You know, a lot of funding for public housing. That exists and then a lot of policy initiatives and. In particular, one of the interesting things, if you didn't catch your eye yet, is uh approval of um. Accessory dwelling units being allowed by right. In all single family. Dwelling zones. Uh, zones, so any town across the Commonwealth. Where they have single family housing, accessory dwelling units are now to be allowed by right. Um. Newbury has had, as I think you guys know, an accessory dwelling unit um bylaw, so we're, but we're, you know. The town was ahead of the curve on that one, so a lot of towns don't have, didn't have any provision in their bylaw for accessory dwelling units, so. It's a big um step forward to try to increase smaller sized. Dwelling units um across, across the state. So what Newbury, what we'll have to do is look at ours and look at. What was passed and make sure we don't have any inconsistencies, um. One of the things is. You can't restrict accessory dwelling units to family members, which is something a lot of towns have, um. So. It's. Interesting timing for us because as I think you'll remember, we did submit with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission for some funding through the Community One Stop Program. To take a look at our housing um bylaws, to look at inclusionary zoning and our ADU bylaw. And sort of see if they need a refresh, so. Anyway, that we'll have to do it, but hopefully we'll have technical assistance through this grant funding um in order to do that work. Uh, with the support of Merrimack Valley Planning. So. Um. Okay, that's my update for the moment. Yeah, I love, any questions?
I have an unrelated question, Kristen, have we heard anything back from the AG on the MBTA communities bylaw yet?
Um, no, and I think they have ninety days and I think it's the. Uh, a couple more weeks, they have a couple more weeks before that ninety days is up, so I think we should be hearing any day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Kristen, may I also pose a question, um? As I recall, when Newbury adopted the accessory dwelling unit. Regulation. Plum Island wasn't included in that approval process, or you couldn't do it on Plum Island because of the P I O D. And. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong in that, but I'm wondering whether the. State's. New law, if you will, it seems to. You know, it's a blanket provision. Regarding zoning for all the communities of the Commonwealth. Is that going in any way impede? The existing approach we've taken towards Plum Island. That is going to start seeing ADUs. On Plum Island now. Because of the state law.
It's a good question and I don't know the answer, Steve, I think there are a lot of. Um, in particular overlay districts, which the Plum Island Overlay District is um water supply protection districts, like there are a lot of different kinds of overlays. That. Will have to be considered. Relative to the underlying zoning, which would now allow by rights, so I don't. I know. Plum Island won't be alone in having that question related to sensitive. You know coastal areas or areas where infrastructure. You know, water supply, for instance, may not. Be sufficient, so I think there are a lot of questions. I know Town Council is writing up um. A sort of memo that summarizes exactly how the legislation um was uh, was. Um was uh was described and its relevance to Newbury's bylaw in particular, so I think that's. More to come on those questions for sure.
Okay, for sure, you know, water supply is gonna be a big issue throughout the Commonwealth as well, uh. You can look at the growth in population in Newburyport and their projected water needs, and you start adding ADUs, it's. Gonna be even more of a strain on the system, but we'll see.
There are definitely, you know, I think there will be a lot of questions and studies looking at that, I mean, I know in some cases. If you take away lawn and add a small dwelling unit, it doesn't necessarily change your, you know. By and far, waters, water use is um. Uh indoor water use is can be very highly efficient, it's really outdoor water use that causes problems with um supply. But anyway, they're all really important questions and concerns and it it needs to work on all levels um to develop this kind of housing, so. Stay tuned, yeah. That's all I had tonight, Woody, unless anyone has questions about other projects or anything.
Anyone else have anything? No? Well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a second. Mary, thank you, alright, Pete, how do you feel?
Sure thing.
Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Nice job, Woody, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, and good night, everyone.
Night, guys, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Great job, Woody.